Good evening, everybody. If we can stand for the pledge.
My pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everybody. We're going to start with just a moment of silence for the 17 people that was killed in Parkland, Florida with another school shooting, so we'll start our meeting with that. Thank you. We're going to move on to exemplary people, and this evening we are going to be recognizing Al Caselia and Kevin Reed, who made this beautiful new podium for Masick High School, so we're going to meet them over there. Guys, come up.
Well, it also doubles as a fine shelter. I just want to thank the Board of Education for giving me the opportunity to publicly thank both Al and Kevin. A couple of years ago, one of the graduating classes talked to us about, or was looking to make a donation for a class gift, and I told him, I said, "What we need is a podium." Our podium that we had was kind of falling into disrepair. I said, "Well, we really need a podium," but they had kind of given me some money for that. And then when I went online to look at podiums, you know, going to a lot of the office sites and whatnot, it's kind of like government toilet seats. They were like a million dollars for ridiculous little press board looking things that aren't very impressive, kind of like, you know, the little one up there. I know Kevin, we'll go back a little bit, and if anyone knows Kevin, and I hope everyone knows Al here, too, but Kevin is an out-of-bought master wood craftsman. Jerry, too, we appreciate that.
That was awesome.
So, they were able to acquire some wood. I'm going to let them, they're going to talk about this for a little bit, but what's pretty cool about this podium in addition to, because a lot of it was, a lot of the wood was actually gathered from the former town hall, 1001.
Sure. Thanks, Joe. Yeah, I'll just, I know you have 15 minutes.
Yeah.
So, we'll do two and a half, two and a half. This is actually my third government meeting tonight, Board of Finance, Town Council, and now Board of Ed, I did the call. So, thank you for having us. As Joe said, it is a lot of the wood from the former town hall, the original town hall, from the town of Monroe. Marvin Moss, who is an absolutely fantastic guy, if any of you know him, he's in the Historic Society. He came to me a few years ago, at the same time as Mr. Cobbs, and he said, "I have some wood from the original town hall. I know you do stuff with that. What do you think? Could you take a look at it, see if it's worth it?" So, we kind of battled around a few ideas, and eventually, to make a long story short, we figured out we're going to use the wood for the podium. So, this, parts of this podium are over 250 years old. You have some American chestnut here, which any of you know, this is an extinct species of wood. In front of you, it's all hand-hewn. These are summer beams from the original town hall. We have some barrel ceiling stuff here and in the back, so this is actually fir chestnut, and this is locally sourced black walnut, because some of the wood was too deteriorated to use, so, and you're right, it's enormous, so we're going to have to get a stool for some folks.
Yeah, some folks might need a stool. We're going to put that on the inside. I definitely, again, I want to thank these guys. I know it was over, combined, over 60 hours of volunteer time that they gave to make this noise.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Al, did you want to say anything?
No, I'm good.
I forgot my speech, Al. It even has lights.
Wow.
Yeah, there's.
Nice.
Thank you.
Get Her Majesty's shipment.
Right there. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you very much. Enjoy.
Gorgeous. Do you have your keys, your husband has? Well, thank you very much. It is absolutely stunning piece.
Joe says it's going in his new office.
Is he dragging that down to graduation on the field?
I think that's the plan.
Oh, boy.
No wheels?
Has it got wheels?
I actually have a dolly that I got for her birthday to keep it.
How heavy is it?
Um, it's, it's heavy.
Good luck getting that down to the field.
Yeah.
Well, actually, it's Joe Cobbs' birthday today, but we won't, you know.
Happy birthday.
So, we'll recognize him there and embarrass him on TV. We were going to move on to the report of the chairman, and we have acknowledgement of a few donations this evening. The first one is GE United Way Campaign to Masick High School for $266.17.
Yeah, what happens is that employees of GE can earmark a nonprofit to have a percentage of their United Way money come to the school. So, we have three people that earmarked it, and this is a quarterly statement, so this is for the first quarter. One is anonymous, Ellen Kavanaugh is another, and Robert Primorak is the third, so these people have earmarked Masick High School to give their percentage of their donation, so we thank them very much for that. And I'll be sending them a letter on your behalf, thanking them.
We will move on to Meritage Group Technology Items for Systemwide. This is Scott Pichot, and he is not here this evening. Jack, do you want to talk about, and this is kind of a donation he's been doing annually to us.
Yeah, Scott's been wonderful to us. Our original monitors here in the Board of Education area were donated by Scott. He's donated over 100 monitors in the past to the district, and this time he's donated, let's see, 13 different PCUs, desktop PCUs, four laptops, two printers, and eight monitors, so he continues to bring good technology for us to deploy in the schools.
Yeah, which is great that we can offset some of those costs by his donations, and that's been, what is this, the third or fourth year he's done it?
I believe third.
Yeah, so we've gotten a great amount of technology from Scott to, into our district, and most of it comes up here, right, because they're desk, they're the desktops?
Most.
Great. Thank you. We will move on to our consent agenda. Do I have a motion to approve? Thank you, Shannon. Do I have a second? Thank you, Jerry. Any discussion? Hearing none. All in favor? Great, thank you. We will move on to our reports of our committees and liaisons, and poor Kevin is alone this evening as our Masick Board Rep, so off you go.
So, not a ton going on coming back from the February break. These two are scoring points in winning basketball game that's going on right now in the gym. So, on Thursday, at the Stone Barn, the Rotary students will be announced. Also, from January, we have Grace Richards Hannigan, and from this month, we have Kayla Dragonese. On the 24th, Music and Meatballs. I love Music and Meatballs. I go even though I'm not even in band or strings, and we've been going because my siblings were in strings, and I always loved it because it meant a really, really good meal, so it's all about the food anyway, so, yeah, and good luck to the boys' basketball team.
Great, thank you. Anybody else have committee reports? Thank you.
Me?
Yes, Stephen.
There's a pension committee meeting. I'll defer to John for any summary on that.
Sure, you know, the non-certified pension plan for the district is held by the town, and so I am a member, Gabby, I'm a full member, and Gabby is a...
Non-voting.
Non-voting member, and we go to these meetings, and we also have Board Reps, David and Jessica, and this time we met, we meet quarterly. We go over the accounts, we see how much, you know, it's made or not made, and of course, this quarter has been very good to the Pension Committee, so everybody's very happy with the results of the Pension Committee. So, when it came time to, should we move the money or not move the money, everybody voted to keep the money where it is. We also spent a lot of time talking about this procedure called a quatro, when, which is a, when someone has a divorce, divorce decree, and how we go about using that. So, we actually got permission from the committee to hire an attorney to put together our procedures, so we had to have a formal procedures. The procedures are done. Gabby and I met with the attorney last week, and so now we're going to bring it back to the committee to vote on. That's where we are.
Great. You have...
Then, yes, Safety Committee met on January 18th, run very well by Jack. Thank you.
Thank you.
We discussed the flu and putting out information to everyone, everyone, which happened, as well as additional cleaning procedures. Representatives from Cigna, Brown &amp; Brown were there, complimented the district on the walking program, the wellness program, was very well received, a lot of participation in that, which we were happy to see, very good presentation on Internet IT safety, and then the rest of the meeting was standard and all is going well.
Can I follow up?
Yes, you can.
When we're talking about the flu, I just want to let you know what we're doing for the flu. We do have some cleaning procedures that we put in place, a little bit more rigorous cleaning procedures over the last month or so. The other thing that we did is we bought Perrell, the green kind, because remember, we have, we have green cleaning, so we have green Perrell that has gone to all the elementary school classrooms and the middle school classrooms, and every cafeteria now has a hand sanitizer as you walk into the cafeteria in all of our schools. So, we're encouraging kids to use that and teachers to use that, because, you know, we do have flu in the district, as I send to you every week, and we're trying to make sure that doesn't get out of hand.
Great. Does anybody else have any committee reports? All right, hearing none, we will move on to public participation. All righty. We will move on to the report of the superintendent.
Okay, Gabby's going to review the fund statement.
So, as I mentioned in the fund statement, insurance was a little bit better in January. Part of it was really because we think that there was a timeline with claims coming in after the Christmas holiday, and that was actually kind of evidenced by an email I got the other days telling me about two high claims that are being processed by Cigna. One is actually for expenses incurred in November, and the other one was for expenses incurred in December, so they're just hitting our books right now, so that kind of proves that out. The other thing we got from Brown &amp; Brown, continuing on insurance, is we got their, the detail behind some of our claims, and we have four claimants who've hit stop loss, and we have 33 claimants over $25,000. Of those, I can tell you off the top of my head, there's probably three people that have maxed out on their dollars, so we won't really be seeing any more claims coming through for those folks. So, you know, of the 33, there might be, you know, 20 some odd still including costs because of ongoing illnesses. Other than that, we're going to be asking departments to start closing POs, so if they open POs in July and August and haven't actually used any of that money unless it's for something like, say, graduation, we're going to ask them to start closing them, because then it's like, well, why are you, why do you have money encumbered if you haven't spent it to date? And we know that there's some things, we know that there's some science things where they won't buy the supplies until the experiments or the, the experiments or that unit in learning is actually coming up, and it might not happen until the spring. They might need to buy, you know, the one thing I can think of is eggs, just because I know at Jockey Holiday, do something with little baby chicks around at the spring, so that, you know, you're going to have a PO, you can't buy the eggs in September if you don't want chickens until June. So, that's something that you would obviously keep open, and, you know, we're, now we're just kind of waiting with the budget for next year, that's pretty much where we're at.
Okay, so the next one is the budget, and I really want to show some slides, because there is some, it can be a little confusing about what's happening with the budget, so I want to share that with everybody. First of all, as you know, the First Selectman has presented his budget, and his budget has a decrease, a 1.37% decrease. We are part of his budget when he presented it, so I just wanted to share that. I know everyone has seen that or heard about that, but there is a decrease in this year's budget, which means taxes will go down 1.37%. If you recall last year, with the issues with the governor's budget, we, when we built our budget, we built it on the assumption of the governor's budget, and what that was, was that over here, the excess cost, which is the special ed money that comes to the Board of Ed, we thought it was going to be $1.5 million, because that's what the governor told us it was going to be. And the town thought they were going to get $3 million, because remember, this is educational cost share that goes to the town, this is special ed excess cost that comes to the Board of Ed. When all things were said and done, the Board of Ed's grant was a minus $628,000, the town was a plus $2.5 million. So, that's what happened when everything checked, checked out at the end when we did the budget. So, because we were down $628,000, we had to find the revenue for that, because it's a revenue issue. It's not an expense issue, we're going to spend the same amount of money we were always going to spend, but it's a revenue issue. And since the town got $2 million, $2.5 million more than they thought, and we got $628,000 less, the town gave us that $628,000 in the form of that contingency that they talked about. So, when we look at this year's budget, because of the $628,000 added to cover that special ed shortfall, we weren't at zero, we're at 1.15% increase. So, we, we still are going forward with a 1.59. What you'll see in the First Selectman's budget is that the Board of Ed's increase for next year is 2.75, because they've combined the two, the two numbers. It's really confusing, it's all about how they really accounted for this money, but basically, we wanted you to know that because that $628,000 that they gave us from contingency is for this year's budget, we can, we can say that this year we're at 1.15%. So, I just wanted that, it's clear as mud, I know, but it is how it's going to be handled, and it's because of the governor's budget last year and all the issues that we had with the governor's budget. We've sat with Ken, with Ron Bonowski, and they're really comfortable how we're presenting it, so that you know, but they, we just need to know that it's going to look like it's 2.75%, because they have to account for it this year, for next year. They have to account for it next year, even though it's in this year's budget. But what we want you to know also is that the First Selectman made $135,000 cut to our budget, because remember, your budget, you put in at 1.84%, the First Selectman cut $135,000, so that's why we're down to 1.59% increase for next year. That $135,000, again, worked with us. $55,000 was for a new truck that we needed for plowing, and we're going to take that out of capital reserve, and the rest of the money was for technology hard drives to buy Chromebooks, to refresh the Chromebooks, and that's coming out of another reserve account that we can, that's from the town. So, even though $135 was cut from our operating budget, it's going to be made up for in these reserve accounts that we have.
In capital.
In capital reserve, right, capital reserve for...
It's not like we're not losing the money, it's just being paid by, for a different way.
And again, if you remember, they got $2.5, the town received $2.5 million more than they thought, so that puts it into, you know, that puts it back into their coffers, which I believe is the reason why the reduction in their taxes was here, because of the money. So, it's very confusing, I get that, but when we presented this to Ken and to Ron, they were okay with us saying, "This year's budget, because of the $628,000, is 1.15, and next year is still at 1.5." Okay? I know that that is a really hard thing to do, and we're going to, Jack and I are going to the PTOs to try to explain it, starting tomorrow. And then Jack is going to talk a little bit about the next section, which is our accountability report.
So, the state has issued the Next Generation Accountability Results. This term is a little confusing, because next generation is also used to describe science, so you'll hear the term next generation used a lot, just keep in mind that it's used for two things, the science standards, as well as the new reporting system for Connecticut schools. So, what does the Next Generation Accountability, Accountability System measure? It measures a lot of different indicators. It's much more comprehensive than the kinds of assessment data we've received in the past, so within this, you'll just see some highlights of the various criteria used to measure district growth and building growth. And it includes academic achievement, it includes a lot of growth, and I'll speak more about that in just a minute, includes our assessment participation rate, how many students showed up for the test on the given day, includes chronic absenteeism, coursework that students take, exams, graduation criteria, post-secondary entrance rate, how many of our students go off to college, physical fitness exams, as well as art access, and the arts access refers to the kinds of courses the students are able to take, but more importantly, how many students actually choose to take those courses. So, the highlights from our report this year, we had four school of distinction honors within Monroe. Monroe Elementary School earned highest performing honors. We had Stephanie Elementary School, where they earned three different honors this year, highest performing, highest growth for high-need students, and highest growth for all students. So, that was some really great news. And our overall rank in the state is, we ranked 42 out of 202 districts in the state, and our DIRG B rank was 16 out of 20, and that's something we'd like to see improve over time. Other than that outcome, really, the rest was a lot to celebrate. So, what are the areas of success, and what are areas we're looking at for growth? John and I sat down and we looked at what are the extremes in the report that we looked at as we went through it. The interesting thing is you'll see a lot of 100% here. The state has set up criteria or benchmarks that districts need to attain. Doesn't mean that 100% of students got there, it means that as a district or a building, we achieved the benchmark that they set for us. It's somewhat complex, they use a lot of vertical scale scores, which are a means to measure growth over time. All that a vertical scale score does is it eliminates new test questions in a latter year, so you're looking at the same test questions that the child takes year to year, so you're really getting a good impression of how much they grow over time. So, those are the kinds of things they're using to create the criteria for which you're seeing these percentage outcomes. So, the good news here is post-secondary entrance, we have a lot of students going off to higher ed, six-year graduation, this is for high-need students with IEPs that extend the amount of time that they're in high school. Four-year graduation rate is very strong, on-track for high school graduation, very strong, preparation for CCR, which is college and career readiness, this is also straight out of the standards. This is the percent of students taking courses that prepare for college and career readiness. And we had chronic absenteeism, we're doing very well there, our student attendance is very strong. Math and ELA performance indexes, how are our students performing in those areas, very strong, in math, 97.7%, and in ELA, 100%. So, those are the strengths. On the areas for growth, our two lowest spots were in the arts and in physical education. In the arts, we had 41.7%, and as I mentioned before, that has to do, how many students are enrolled? And if you, if you do look at neighboring districts, Trumbull and Newtown as examples, their arts programs are much bigger. That's just the reality of it, and those are the kinds of comparisons that the state is making when we look at this. On physical education, this includes how many students pass the state fitness test and how many students took the test. We look at those rates today. Our high school participation rate was slightly below what the state expects us to attain in terms of how many students actually take the test, and then also the number of students to pass it. The, the benchmark is higher than what many of our students are retaining, so that's why that number is lower. And then the other areas that we'll be focusing on are for our high-need students in terms of math growth and ELA growth, and these are both relative weaknesses in the overall data that we've received. Questions? Yeah, Alan?
What's the plan going forward with math, ELA?
Well, one of the things we've talked about is, we're in the process, the administrative team is currently in the process of creating draft materials for the board with the Goals and Action Plan, so one of the things we'd like to do is include some of those need areas within our action plan, so it's embedded in the work that we're looking and staying focused on over time.
And we're looking at our, all the reading support that we have in the elementary schools, so we're looking to also take some of those people and have them work with students on math also, because it's, we know students that need some support, and reading also needs some support, math, and elementary teachers are certified to do that, so we want them to look at math scores as well as reading scores next year.
And then the other thing that Kay's been working on, too, is within IEPs, taking a look at standard indicators for students, so that we're measuring against the same criteria, so we're pursuing the same goal.
So, making the IEPs tighter?
Yeah, and again, leading towards, if, you know, this is a need that we're seeing within the next gen, so now tying the goals within the IEPs towards that outcome, it's really makes a lot of sense.
Right. And, you know, the work that Stephanie did this year showed that they got that for the growth of high-need students, so we're working on that. Okay, the next thing I wanted to just bring up is the process to hire a high school principal, and the committee has been selected, and I notified everybody on the committee so far, as of this morning, we had 38 applicants, and we put a process in place that we hope will make, will make hiring a little bit easier, a little bit more streamlined. We're going to start with a paper screening, and in that paper screening, we want to make sure that we're, we have some criteria for that paper screening. So, we want to make sure that they have some administrative experience, we want to make sure that they have secondary school experience, because we think that's important. We're going to look for people who come from high-performing districts, that's going to be preferred, and we're also going to look at people who have building-level administrative experience, again, preferred. But, you know, the, the deal breakers, they, we want them to have high school experience, and we want them to have some administrative experience. So, we're going to do a paper screening first, hopefully get it down to a more manageable group, because 38's not pretty manageable, so we want to get it down to a manageable group. Then we talked about having these pre-screenings, 30 minutes where they come into the high school, they meet with Donna, Jack, Zamri, Joe Cobbs and I, and have some conversations. Also, they will be able to interact with some people in the offices, we hope that the secondary instructional leaders will be there, the school secretaries will be there, and they'll have some interaction with their, with them, and then we'll get some feedback from everybody, just from those conversations. Once we get this down to a more manageable, and we figure eight would be the top number, the highest we could do, we'll do 45-minute interviews with the committee, a formal 45-minute interviews. Oh, by the way, in the pre-screening, we're also going to have them do a writing sample. We think it's really important that they be able to communicate in writing, and so we want to give them a sample, and it will be more like, you know, something happened, we want you to write an email. We want to see what you're going to put on paper, so we think writing is pretty important for a high school principal to have. So, then once we get it to 45-minute interviews, we'll get it down to the top one or two or three people, and then we'll do some visitations. We want to go to the school, see what, see what happens at their school, talk to people in their school, and then the committee will come together to make a final recommendation. So, it's a pretty, I think it's a pretty lengthy process, but for us, it's really important that we find the right person, and this is a way for us to find the right person. So, more to come, it doesn't end, the posting doesn't end until Friday, the 23rd, so we have some time for more people.
Yep.
Another thing that we, I wanted to just share with you is about the pool. I don't know if you were aware, the pool was closed down this weekend because, first, it wasn't being heated, and we found out because there was a leak in the pool. So, on Friday, we closed, they actually closed the whole building to students because we were not sure about asbestos. And although it was a small contained area, and it could have been abated relatively easily, there can't be anybody under 18 in the building when you do that. What, what we discovered is that there was not asbestos in the elbow joints that we thought they were, they were tested, they came back with nothing. So, that was good news. And then when they started to go in deeper to find out where these pipes were leaking, it became apparent that going down into this channel that's in the utility room was not going to be the way to go. So, now there are pipes on the outside of the wall in the, in the pool area. Again, not our preferred way to do this, but really, the only way to do it cost-effectively and to get it done. So, we do, the pool is up and running, it's up to temperature, everybody can use it, they used it today, so I just wanted you to, to know about that, if you heard anything about that. The other thing I want to share with you is that we got a letter from the NASC, the Monroe Association of Schools and Colleges, that our accreditation is coming either the fall of 2021 or the spring of 2021, so Mr. Cobbs has to apply to, for that beautiful event. For those of you who weren't here the last time, it is an event. There was a visiting committee that comes from other schools, they come in and they look at every aspect of Masick High School. You know, you will be a part of the conversation, they, they definitely want to talk to board members, there'll be committees, they want to know, you know, what your feeling is about the district, and they look at every aspect of our building. So, it is a, it's a huge... So it is, it's a huge undertaking. I was here the last accreditation, I was principal at the last accreditation, and it's a big undertaking. Sorry, I'm not going to be here for this.
You can always come back if you have experience, you can come back and run it.
Was that sincere? And the last thing I want to talk about, Joe will be here, he'll be a part of it, big part of it.
Yeah. It's like a year-plus preparation to get ready for it. It's not like, oh, you throw it together in like a month. It takes like over a year.
I mean, that year, we had early release once a month to get ready for it. And it's just, it's teachers sitting in committees, looking at mission statements and belief statements, and really, they look at everything. They look from our assessments, to curriculum, to how students feel about the culture in the school. It's a pretty comprehensive report, and you know, we did very well ten years ago, and no doubt that we'll do well again this one, two thousand twenty-one. But it's a big, it's a big deal. The other thing I wanted to talk about, and I'm not sure if you heard this, and this is the last thing in my report, is the whole, because of what happened in Florida, there are groups who are talking about walkouts. I don't know if you've heard that. We, in fact, had a student today who started to put out flyers about a walkout for tomorrow. And Joe met with that student. The good part was this weekend, the school superintendents were emailing back and forth about this, so we were well aware of what was happening and how it was happening, and we had some, there were some ideas out there. Joe talked to the student today to say, look, we want the student to have a voice. Students need to have a voice, they should feel comfortable having a voice. And so we talked about what better way to do this than just to say, everybody just take a walk out of class today, or tomorrow. So that student canceled the walkout for tomorrow, and we're going to do it with the rest of the, I guess, the state or the country in March. We're going to ask, we're going to ask Donna to be there, I'll be there, Jack will be there, the first selectman, the chief of police, we'll ask JP if he could come, and so that we can hear what these students have to say. And they, and it will be held in the gym so that they can have a microphone, so that there's some order to this. But they want to have a voice, they want to talk about this, they want to do something about this, and I think they should be commended for that. So we're setting it up for our students so that they'll have a voice. We talked about even like giving them the opportunity to write postcards to their representatives. We want them to be able to talk about it. The good part about this is we're calling it a solution, what are the solutions to the problem? There are lots of, there could be lots of solutions to this problem. What are they? And so we can get everybody's voice in there. So more to follow. Joe met with the student today. Anything you want to add, Joe?
You know, that's a big thing. I mean, they're looking for, they're looking for a platform. I commend them for that. You know, I was just trying to discourage tomorrow, just because logically, you know, what they wanted to achieve just wasn't really come to fruition. We had a thousand kids walking around the field, kind of looking at each other. I said, let's, you know, when I spoke to them, I said, well, what's your goal again? Well, we want the superintendent, and we want our local government officials, we want those people to hear us. I said, well, give me some time. And I said, let's see if we can get those folks together so you can have that voice to do it. So when I came back, they were kind of thrilled. The one person in particular was kind of thrilled that we were going to try to organize them. I said, you know, let's give it some time, she'll get thoughts, prepare some things.
So, yeah. I mean, again, we don't, these are our leaders, these are our future leaders, we're going to discourage them to get involved, but we wanted them to do it in a way that their voice could be heard.
So March is when we'll do it? We don't know.
March fourteenth is the day.
March fourteenth.
Oh, March fourteenth?
March fourteenth is the day that, I think it's Connecticut, or it might be.
No, it's national.
It's national. So March fourteenth is the date. And I know there's an April date also.
Yeah, there's an April date as well.
There's an April twentieth, I think.
April twentieth, yeah.
But, you know, I think because it's becoming more prevalent in this area in Connecticut, I think they're going to do the month thirteen.
Fourteen.
March fourteenth, sorry.
Right. And that's what Joe also encouraged her, why would you want to do it on an off day instead of doing it when everybody else is doing it too? So it's more organized, that it's everybody that's doing it.
Do you have a time picked out already also?
Yeah, it's funny, because there's a, I don't know who started this one, because it was actually supposed to be going tomorrow, I haven't heard as much about that. But the one from March fourteenth nationally is ten AM Eastern. And then there's supposed to be another one, April twentieth. March fourteenth is the one-month anniversary of this most recent shooting, unfortunately. And then April twentieth is, well, the anniversary of the column one. So those would be the next two, and those ones, I think nationally, being advertised as ten AM local time.
So that will do the same?
Yeah, we'll do the same.
So that's what we're expecting, just on that time.
Okay, that was it for me.
Does anybody have any questions for John before we move on? All right. Here we now, we will move on to our presentation. Ian is here, who is going to talk to us about nonfiction reading and social studies. So are you using?
Yes, I am going to use.
Do you want me to call that up?
Did you get the link?
Uh, yeah. Call it up for you. Is it true?
I can, sure. Sure, did this one? I also have gifts, because I know you love to read, so I have brought all of the books that I'm proposing tonight, so everybody can take a look. And I don't know the best way to do this, but I'll just, since I saw this one, somehow I.
I'm reading them too.
Well, thank you for giving me the floor tonight. I really appreciate having the opportunity to talk to you about it. And really, I wanted to talk about, why are we emphasizing reading in social studies? Because I feel like this came up a little bit, and, you know, we always think about reading in the ELA classroom, and what we're trying to do is really embed reading across the curriculum. And having embedded books that we're going to read have a lot of advantages that I will talk about up here. Let's start with the U.S. Department of Education website. The single most important thing you can do to help your child succeed in school is to teach them to read. We know this at every hospital, you know, you walk out with your newborn and with good night mood, right? Reading to your child at whatever age is incredibly important. Having your child read, they say on the website, is the single most important thing you can do for your child's benefit in school. The Connecticut Core Standards suggests that as we go through our K-12 education, that we read more and more nonfiction. In the K-5 level, they suggest we read about a fifty-fifty split between fiction and nonfiction. By the time we get to high school, it really should be about a seventy-thirty split in nonfiction reading. That's a great suggestion. What's actually happening? Well, this is the most recent Kaiser Family study that I could find, two thousand and ten. If you take a look at what are kids doing, and this probably will ring true with us as parents, four hours, four and a half hours watching TV a day, listening to music two and a half hours, reading twenty-five minutes. Of that twenty-five minutes of reading, about three and a half minutes are nonfiction reading. Now, this is a national study, not what happens for our kids here in Monroe, but I think as we extrapolate from two thousand and ten onward, we see that, you know, screen time has become more and more prevalent with our kids, right? I have a seventh grader and a fifth grader at home, and I find myself sometimes yelling, let's just watch TV together, so that you'll get off the phone. So what does this present? Why do I present this? Well, it's, this is the challenge, this is what we're up against. So if we want to embed reading as a habit of mind with our kids, we're up against a lot of things. We're up against video games and TV and I-everythings. And we know that can have a big difference. Kyleen Beer's most recent book, this book called Disrupting Thinking, is from the Teachers' College Group at Columbia University, and talks about where adolescent readers stand. So if you're reading this chart, it's a little bit difficult to get, but the ninety-eighth percentile of kids reads sixty-five minutes a day. That's the ninety-eighth percentile. Not a lot of kids are reading sixty-five minutes a day. The lower thirtieth percentile are reading, on average, one-point-eight minutes a day. What could we do if we embedded ten more minutes of reading for these kids? Ten more minutes of reading, just in their exposure to words in context, okay? And what you can see here is that if you added ten minutes to the kids at the top, the very top, which we have some of those kids in our district, you're going to expose them to about fifteen percent more words every year, okay? You're going to go from about, reading the number, I think it's about five and a half million words that they read in context, up to over six. But for our students in the lower ranges, we can make a five-hundred percent increase in the amount of words that they see, just by adding ten minutes of nonfiction reading a day. Now, that matters when it comes to language acquisition, when it comes to high-order thinking skills, when it comes to recognizing terms, okay? When it comes to things like, quite frankly, the SBACK test or the SAT test, areas that we know where they test things like words in context. How well do students and kids recognize words as they're used in context? I rarely go a day without a teacher coming up to me at some point, bemoaning that they had to tell their class about a word that they felt like, this is just a normal word, I'm surprised that this, you know, my class didn't understand what advocate meant, or, you know, another word that maybe they felt like, you know, this is something that they would have expected kids to know. So ten minutes a day can make a big difference. What are we currently reading in social studies? Well, we're reading mostly from textbooks and primary documents. How many of us read textbooks and primary documents? How many have that on the bedside, right? We're not. The other thing that we're reading in class is Junior Scholastic, which is like a magazine, and a lot of us read magazines, or online, or paper magazines. But what we do when we read for pleasure, when we're on the beach in the summer or whatever, we're reading books. We're reading nonfiction and fiction books. And our kids, I feel like, in social studies class, are not going to get the engagement that they should have with history if all we expose them to are primary documents and textbooks. Textbooks take out a lot of the fun, and primary documents are difficult. It's like Shakespeare a lot of times. So if we can get in their hands good history, historical fiction, or real good nonfiction, I feel like we can engage kids better in history class. So this is the plan. Embed historical fiction and nonfiction into the formal curriculum for all students. We already have in grade six, we read a book called The Taste of Salt. It's about Haiti in the early nineties, and it's a very popular read with the kids. The kids oftentimes say it's the most, their favorite unit that they do in the entire grade level. What I would like to do is bring in two books into grade seven. Over time, I'm proposing both now, but I think initially I would start with one book. We have both Refugee, which is coming around, and the graphic novel about Nelson Mandela. And then we're going to look for two books for grade eight. In the fall, I'm not sure which book, I'm looking at one about Harriet Tubman right now. And the second book is the one that's coming around, Chasing Lincoln's Killer. I'll talk more about those books specifically at the end of the presentation, but that's my plan, is I'd like to have these as formal reads that every kid can work with their teacher So let's talk about engagement. Like I said, Taste of Salt is one of the, it's a story of a teenager in Haiti during a time of Papa Doc Duvalier, who was a, basically a totalitarian dictator in the country of Haiti, and how difficult life was for these, basically, kids. And our sixth graders fall in love with the story. It's a difficult story in the sense that there's a lot of names and words that they're not used to seeing, but they really do get into it. In looking at some of the data, the ASCD talks about motivating kids, and we see it in the classroom, there's data to support it, that kids really can find the real world to be just as surprising and intriguing as make-believe. How many of us like to watch a movie and see that it's based on true events, right? And it kind of adds a little richness to it. And I think that's where we're going to create self-motivated readers. Kids are going to go to the library and check out a book on their own, you know, and want to read. So these are the three books. Again, I'll talk about them more at the end, but I think each of them have an engaging quality that I'd like to highlight for you. Reading also supports inquiry. We've, really, education across the board has gone to inquiry education, but social studies is no different. And inquiry is really about kids asking questions and researching and finding answers to those questions. When we read, when we read this book about Haiti, for instance, kids are always concerned about, why is Haiti so much poorer than the Dominican Republic? Why do we go on vacations to the Dominican Republic but never hear about Haiti? And they find out it's the same island. We're talking about the same place, almost the same place geographically. Why is one so different than the other? And that starts a student-led initiation of research, and we get into that question. What's the difference in culture between the two countries? How have things changed in Haiti today? Is it any better? You know, some of them, a few years back, we had the horrible earthquake that devastated Haiti. Kids were very interested to see what was happening, and still are interested today to find out, what is the situation? And unfortunately, the situation in Haiti today is fairly dismal. We watch a video about what it's like to survive on basically one dollar a day in Haiti. And one dollar a day would be quite a lot of money for the Haitian people. So we're getting into areas that the Connecticut Social Studies Standards want us to get into. Government, economics, geography, and history, these are all the things that are coming up, but they're developing the questions, so they want to find the answers. It's not the teacher saying, this is what we're studying today, kids. You know, they're, in fact, interested in finding these answers, although it is the teacher who puts the book in front of them for the first time. The act of reading adds nonfiction, background knowledge to our kids' learning, and we know that background knowledge can account for as much as a one-third variance in student achievement. If I gave you guys something to read about something that you do in your own discipline, you'd have a much better understanding of it if it was in law enforcement, for instance, than if I gave you something that was outside of your realm of understanding. And so by reading from different perspectives about different people, we're widening students' background knowledge. We're taking those sixth graders who have been learning in social studies mostly about the United States and the state of Connecticut, and the town of Monroe, and their little communities, and we're broadening their scope and their knowledge to the world. And we know that has positive impacts on things like SBACK and SAT preparation. We do very well on SBACK and in SAT, but if there are areas that we kind of are with the mean, with the average, it's areas of words in context and language use. This category right here, analysis within or across texts, analyzing relationships among literary elements, is an area, actually, it's the only one area that we have a negative sign there. That negative sign means that we're below the national average in that one area. And I think that this is, this is obviously our identified area of growth. This is what we want to work on. So I think by reading more across the curriculum, we can only read so much more in English class. You know, Mike Crowley's done a fantastic job with the help of the Teachers' College Program, bringing reading into the classroom. Kids are doing a lot more reading than I saw ten years ago in the English class. But if we're going to expand on reading, we have to do it somewhere else as well. And social studies, we all read, we all read social studies on our own, right? Oftentimes, unfortunately, it's when we become adults that we find out that social studies is actually really interesting. We love these history books. They're on, you know, New York Times Bestseller lists for adults, and I think it's, I don't think it's just because we recognize that now we're kind of part of history, I think it's also because we don't expose kids to really good nonfiction writing when they're young. And I'd like to change that. This kind of generated on a couple of school visits we did, I went on a CES as a social studies coordinators group that we meet often, and we get together a couple times a year, and we do school visits. And I went down to Bedford Middle School in Westport, and I noticed they were reading a book every quarter. And I thought, wow, that's a great idea. And then we went over to Ellington in an unintentional way, we went over to check out their one-to-one program with Jack Zamri, and we wanted to see how they're using technology. And the thing I walked away with is I noticed, how many books are you guys reading? We went in January, the average student had read between twenty and thirty books. I mean, we couldn't find the time to do that ourselves. These kids have read twenty or thirty books, and of course, that has benefits, okay? Even the Teachers' College Reading Program uses mentor texts, and so we're trying to take that idea. Let's start, that's our first step. Let's get a book that we read in each grade in social studies. And of course, this is lifelong learning. You know, we had, this is a Monroe read, The Boys and the Boat, it's a New York Times bestseller. Who hasn't heard about Hamilton blowing up Broadway and the books that are jumping off the shelves about our, you know, it's funny, as a history teacher, to see everybody so excited about Alexander Hamilton, but it's very inspiring. Popular movies, Unbroken, Hidden Figures, these are all what I just pulled off the New York Times Bestseller list from the last couple of years, bestselling nonfiction. Lifelong learning. If we're going to ask kids to become lifelong learners, and we really stand true to that message and that ideal, we have to start embedding those habits. to that message and that, that ideal, we have to start embedding those habits in them at an early age. So who's it come down to? It comes down to us, myself, it comes down to Mr. Ceccholini, you know, principals, curriculum directors, department heads. I fill out two of those three areas. And we really have to put these items in the hands of teachers and, and get them prepared to work with our students. So that's why I'm here, as a representative really of, of all of the middle school teachers. So again, this is the plan. Let me get just a little bit into the, the three books and then I'll be glad to answer any questions that you have. The first book is Refugee, already a New York Times Bestseller, just came out in 2017. It was, I went to my, my son's middle school, he lives there, we live in Southbury. He goes to Memorial Middle School and they had the Scholastic Book Fair and there was a giant display for this book, Refugee. It is kind of very popular right now. It tells the story of three different refugees. One who was a refugee from the Holocaust who left on a ship called the St. Louis. If you'll indulge me, I'll give a little history lesson. And has anybody ever heard of the ship, the St. Louis? The St. Louis was a ship that took Jewish refugees from Germany and was hoping to seek refuge in Cuba. It was denied entrance. It then came to Miami and because of the geopolitical situation and the United States not wanting to upset Nazi Germany at that time, we didn't allow the ship entrance in Miami either. That ship returned back to, back to Europe and most of the people on board were then sent back into concentration camps. It's a sad story. There's a whole room about it in the U.S. Holocaust Museum. One of the stories is a, is a boy named Joseph who was aboard that ship. Another story is a, a girl named Isabel who was in Cuba. And she's seeking refuge in the 1990s, trying to, to flee Fidel Castro and come to America. And the third is a modern story of a Syrian refugee fleeing from the civil war there. And I don't want to give it away, but the three stories end up connecting at the end, although they're from different historic time periods, there is, there is a tie that brings them together. I just talked to a parent recently whose daughter is a middle school student in the district. She read the book and, and loved it. It is an appropriate lection, an age level range. It's written with middle school kids in mind. It is historical fiction, but the history that's woven into it is all factually accurate. The only thing that's not factually accurate is the, is the story of these three people and how they connect. I'm proposing that for our unit in the Middle East in grade seven. It also fits in really well with the five themes of geography. We talk about movement and movement of people and ideas and that kind of stuff. It, it fits very well into the curriculum. I'll get more into that if, if you want me to. Try to be quick here, so. The other book for seventh grade, a very popular unit we have, is on South Africa and apartheid and Nelson Mandela's role in ending apartheid there. This is a graphic novel, which can be very popular with students. And sometimes we look at it, we, and some people will dismiss graphic novels as, this is nothing more than a comic book, but it really is at a good reading level, a high reading level, including primary source excerpts. So we have speeches that Mandela gave that are put into this. We have court documents from his trial at Ravonia when he stood up against apartheid to the, to the apartheid government. But at the same time, there's all these pictures there. So for our struggling readers, they have the pictures to go along to help them as well. And lastly, Chasing Lincoln's Killer is by James Swanson. Swanson himself is a very interesting character. He has some, I think he's like born on Lincoln's birthday or something, so he, from the time he was eight years old, he started collecting Lincoln memorabilia and he got really into the Lincoln assassination and he's basically written this book. You might recognize the title, Manhunt, because that was the adult version of the book. The young adult version of the book is called Chasing Lincoln's Killer. And although a lot of our kids understand who this guy is here on the cover, John Wilkes Booth, and they think that's the end of the story, Swanson knows everything there is to know about this. And it's a, it's 100, 200 pages, but it's such a quick read. The grade level reading of it is really more seventh, seventh grade into eighth grade. But it's a very popular book. It is in the Teachers' College Program, so a lot of kids will choose to read this already. We have probably 30 or 40 kids a year who read this book on their own just by choice. I'd like to make it part of the formal curriculum to get everybody involved with it. This would probably be the first one I would purchase because I have grant funding to cover the cost of purchasing this book. And I'd like to get, because we do have, again, we do have a, a book already in the, in the sixth grade. I'd like to get one into the eighth grade and to the seventh grade as soon as possible. So these are my, my, I guess, these are the books that I am proposing. But also, the bigger picture is this is why I propose all of this stuff. I appreciate your time and I'd be glad to answer any questions. I know it's the end of the, Jared.
Ian, give me the, the total cost roughly.
Total cost, per book is about $1,600.
Okay.
That would put a class copy in the set, in the hands of every eighth grade teacher so they wouldn't have to shuffle them across. But I already have $1,600 and, and in grant money to cover one of those. I got it through the Weller Foundation. I applied for it over the summer and received funds for that. And I would apply again for, for future costs. Yeah.
You mentioned some other schools that you visited.
Sure.
Were reading a lot of books.
Yeah.
Those like history-oriented books or?
Some were. A lot of what they were doing was doing reading groups. So in the Teachers' College Program, every two weeks, they had a reading group. And so like, if like the four or five of us were in a group and we were studying, let's just say the Civil War, we would all pick a book that we were interested about the Civil War. You might pick this one, I might pick something about war nurses and the Civil War or something like that. And then they, they get together. And because the teacher is pretty strict on the program, they really have to finish their book within two weeks. So you can see that, that, that ratchets up quite a bit. But they did it in, in social studies classes also. That's how they're able to get to those numbers. I really, I, I do have to thank Mike Crowley for, for kind of helping instruct me on the Teachers' College Program because it's not something that I was really familiar with, but he's been very good at kind of inducting me into this idea and it's something I definitely believe in.
And I think, I think Ian needs to be commended. He, he finds the books that are interesting, that are relevant to the, to the curriculum. And we're only going to get better with this work. So Ian, I appreciate all the work that you do with this because.
Thank you.
It's going to make a difference in our students' lives.
Thank you. All right, so.
Thank you.
You got some homework.
Thank you.
Thanks. See you.
All right. Well, that actually, we have no old business and that actually, presentation took care of our new business, which is the curriculum of the three books.
And Ian brought this to the curriculum committee, so it's been reviewed by the curriculum committee and, and the curriculum committee voted to bring it to you.